Good evening, everybody. It's January 3rd, 2023. It's our first reorganizational meeting of the year. But everybody, please stand and join us for questions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I anticipate that our reorganizational meeting will be very quick because it's a consent agenda. So I would like you to motion for resolutions 2023-001 through 2023-032, please. Thank you, Ed. May I have a second? Are there any questions or comments or concerns? Anything from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass this unanimously. Thank you. I forgot to announce that our deputy supervisor, fellow town board member Josh Pulver is stuck in an airport and has been for a couple of days. So that's why he's not here. She'll go home later tonight. So happy trails, Josh. Okay. I guess we need a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're adjourned for our reorganizational meeting. That's about a minute and a half. I'd like to call to order this January 3rd, 2023, regular town board meeting for the town of Reinbeck. Would everybody please stand for the click? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have a motion for the special meeting minutes of November 3rd, 2029, and our regular meeting minutes of December 12th, 2022? Thank you, Chauncey. Thank you, Allen. Are there any questions or concerns or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass this unanimously. A couple of announcements. All used Christmas trees will be accepted at the transfer station for free from now until you get rid of them this year, and they'll be put in our landfill. So take your ornaments and tinsel off and bring them down to the transfer station. I just want to remind everybody that our senior man is up and running. He's providing transportation. Call the town clerk at 876-3409 to get on the schedule or volunteer. I think we have a lot of volunteers right now, so thanks. We have two presentations tonight. The first one is the Citizens Zoning and Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. You guys have been working all year for us looking at how we can add sustainability practices and policy to our town comprehensive plan and to our zoning law. And also, you've been looking at traffic, I think, on our rural roads or rural road issues, rural historic road issues. So thank you for all the work during the year. Kathy Amber of Planning Places is here to give the presentation.
All right. So again, thank you, everyone. My name is Kathy Amber. I'm founding capable planning for places and the privilege of serving as the facilitator, working with a great group of volunteers on the zoning comprehensive plan advisory committee. And there we go. And I just want to introduce the members whom are here tonight. So I'd like to thank everyone for their hard work. We have Michael, Joe, Kara, Chad, Ruben, Beau, and Steve, who are on the committee, and Ruben, Kara, and Steve are here tonight, as well as a representative from Cornell Cooperative Extension of Duchess County, as well. So thank you for coming and thank you for all your efforts. We also had two liaisons who worked with us as well, Melody from the planning board and Tim from the survey board. So as you may recall, the charge of the committee was to identify and recommend potential changes to the comprehensive plan and town codes regarding rural roads and environmental and sustainability issues, essentially to bring the town up to date on current trends and best practices and policies. And I was going to summarize the two memorandums and appendix that was provided in the town packet for you today, just to give you an overview of what the recommendations were of the committee. So to start, related to sustainability, the committee recommends coordination with the village of Reinbeck on sustainability goals, particularly because regional coordination is really important to enhance sustainability and climate change efforts. And there's also an opportunity as the village's comprehensive plan effort is underway to continue that coordination that's really ongoing. So all the recommendations have priorities recommended by the committee, and this recommendation is a short-term priority for the committee. The next recommendation related to sustainability is the adoption of a sustainability chapter as an addendum to the comprehensive plan. This is a short-term priority for the committee. And it is intended to incorporate both the required and optional elements that are recommended by the New York State Climate Smart Communities Program. And there are a number of different recommendations through that program, but a few of them, I'm just highlighting here in the register and the memo that were talked about a lot by the committee, are looking at alternative modes of transportation, conservation of local food systems, minimizing solid waste, recycling, waste reduction and composting, protecting drinking water, looking at water protection and preservation strategies such as gray water systems, and also promoting adaptation to climate change, those strategies related to land use. And we also talked a lot about public engagement and education of climate change as well. The next sustainability recommendation was related to the codes. There are a few sections that the committee recommends reviewing a little bit further related to sustainability and scenic resources principles. And this is a short- to medium-term priority, depending on, you know, what plans may be in place that may involve later zoning recommendations coming out of that. So the codes related to the wetlands sections of the code, section 12532 and Chapter 120 Wetlands, it might be useful to review those a little bit further, as is section 12564, which is the designated transfer, transfer development rights section of the code. And we also talked about adding a scenic roads definition to the definitions section as that's not currently in the code.
Kathy, I'm sorry. Is this...I'm having trouble following along with this. Is this slightly off what we have?
It's a summary of what you have.
Okay.
So if you look at it, there are two memos.
Yep.
One on sustainability and one on scenic roads. And so I'm just highlighting the key recommendations. So the next recommendation in that sustainability memo, which you received actually previously from the committee early on in its work, was about that 2007 Capitab map and report that was recommended to be updated to reflect existing current conditions. I know that's underway. And we also had previously sent a recommendation from the committee of cultural resources inventory similar to natural resources inventory. All we did this time was just add some more specifics about what could be in a cultural resources inventory and suggested some prioritization. So the committee in general, and when they're recommending any plans, are recommending at least starting with some mapping efforts, and then as funding allows, then you can add the planning process after that.
What type of cultural resources?
So cultural resource inventory has been have a lot of different things within them. Let me just highlight that for you real quick. So things like historic sites. Could it have a description of architectural details? Can I think of else? It might have, you know, mapping of the historic and cultural resources, historic districts and historic sites. A lot of that we have in our ransom plan, but it would go into a little bit more detail.
The hamlets and other historic pieces within the town?
Yes.
Or cultural... Does cultural...does it have to be historical or kind of be non-historical?
It could be, you know, like landscapes and scenic districts and scenic roads as well. So just moving on to the rural roads recommendations, the second memo and then the appendix was developed by the rural roads subcommittee, and they focused on rural road recommendations. So the first one was us recommending a creation of a map of all the scenic roads, view sheds and historic landscapes and designated historic roads that are included in the comprehensive plan, so adding to the map that's currently there in figure 10.2. Some of the details in the section of the plan are just not on the map currently, so it would just be updated in that map. And that was recommended as a short-term priority. The next recommendation that the committee recommends is looking at creating a town open space plan or community preservation plan to target long-term protection of natural and cultural features, recreational users...uses, excuse me, and buffer zones for the scenic roads. And then, again, one strategy is to do some mapping and then later go through a planning process in the midterm.
Is this like the transfer tax that Redhook has?
Yes. So before, Redhook had the transfer tax, and that's actually another recommendation. They developed a plan to target which areas they'd like to target for preservation.
Buying preservation, conservation rights?
Yeah. So you could do it as a more general open space plan or you could have it a little bit more tailored as a community preservation plan, which is why we said one or the other. And then, kind of in keeping with that as well and developing these things further, the committee recommended creating a town roads and open space advisory committee as well that could help support the town board, the planning board, conservation advisory boards, and the highway department related to scenic roads.
Could that be given to the conservation advisory board?
It could, and that's something that was talked about as well as an alternative. Absolutely.
Sorry to interject, but we're just having so many challenges filling open seats that anything we could consolidate, you know, we have a pretty vibrant historical and archaeological preservation committee. I believe we're getting there with our conservation advisory board. It's a mighty hard start on the board.
Right. Totally understand. And we actually talked about that as an issue of volunteerism, and then that was the alternative. But the gist is that something could be done with volunteers to address those efforts, scenic roads and open spaces. So the next item was related to the comprehensive plan action items related to critical environmental areas for scenic roads, scenic view sheds, historic roads and landscapes that were included in the plan. So the committee recommends moving those forward, and that would probably be a long-term priority because that usually requires a more public-involved process and public appearance to designate critical environmental areas. And then the next recommendation was related to creating a road steward citizen engagement initiative. So building on the support for scenic roads, this would be a volunteer effort to try to bring more awareness of what regulations may be in place or maybe future regulations. And again, it's sort of a volunteer effort. It could be dovetailed with the conservation advisory work, for example.
Or even broken up into neighborhoods where the roads are. That would be...
Yep.
Yeah. For residents of the roads, the ones who are of their roads. Yeah, that seems like the natural to me, you know? Okay. Great.
And then another recommendation was related to requiring permitting for contractor work in buffer zones along scenic roads. And this would be exclusive of routine landscape maintenance, basically just ensuring that contractors are aware of the regulations and they're operating within those regulations. And that would involve some administration, however, to implement that permit system.
It would just be a part of our building...
Right. The building, yeah. And then the next two recommendations related to scenic roads or rural roads, this is something that's already underway as part of training for boards, but as new regulations should they be adopted, you know, in-service training sessions and communications related to those new regulations related to scenic road policies would be an ongoing priority for training.
Who does those training sessions? Where are they? Who gives them?
I know the planning board has required a training, so something like that for planning board conservation advisory members. You know, a lot of there's some area organizations that provide it. Department of State provides...
Cornell.
Cornell.
I think so.
Yes. And then finally, it was to your point earlier about the idea for a community preservation fund. This is the last recommendation, designated as a midterm priority because that would take a while to develop, but looking at ways the town can work with both local land trust and conservation organizations to protect both scenic roads and open space. And that kind of goes well with that other recommendation of looking at an open space plan or a community preservation plan. And, you know, some communities create a 2% real estate transfer tax to enact this fund.
Of anything over median sales price?
Right.
Is it 2% in Redhook or...
I believe it's 2% in Redhook.
I speak to, you know, supervisor there frequently who's thrilled with their fund.
And there's a number of other communities that have done it as well, and their legislation is available. So we're looking into that a little bit too, just to provide you that as well. So that's really the summary of the recommendations in those memos. So if I can take any other questions, and members of the committee are available to answer any as well.
Well, I don't know. First of all, thank you again. It doesn't seem like a lot, but I know you sifted through a ton of information and came up with some really good suggestions. We're already updating, you know, we've gotten there at KIVIA on board. You know, I guess my one question is, we've been getting so many complaints about traffic lately, and I don't know how to deal with it. I don't know what we can do on rural roads for it. Is there anything more we could pursue? I thought that there were plans like making streets one-way or putting in, you know, gardens in the center of...
Oh, like a median or...
Median. Traffic. Is that something we need to look at?
It's something you do. I mean, I think the question is which roads are there and what kind of study you'd like to do. I mean, certainly in transportation plans, look at road safety issues or traffic calming, for example. Some communities look at also like, one of the things we talked about as well is complete streets policies or, you know, basically non-automobile traffic, encouraging pedestrian bicycling in transit or alcohol. So there are a number of different ways to address that, but some things that we looked into. And the committee also looked at a truck limits law that was recently passed as well. And so that was in the head...
We've discussed that with our attorneys, and we're not sure of the...
Maybe an enforcement issue?
The validity of it with interstate commerce.
Okay.
But we're looking at it.
So there's a number of different options related to traffic calming transportation. Check and explore.
Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah. Where does one look for criteria to determine whether or not a road is a scenic road or a historic road?
Well, right now, the scenic roads are designated in the comprehensive plan currently. They're named. They're specifically named, and that was that recommendation. They're just putting it on a map so it's more readily available so people know. But it is listed in the comprehensive plan currently. And then if future roads are considered to be designated, that would go through a process as well. And so the committee did come up with some kind of model legislation for how to go about designating scenic roads and came up with some suggested criteria for doing so.
And we'll find that here?
Yes. The actual legislation is in the appendix portion.
Did you find any other roads that weren't named that should be on that list?
I don't think so.
We were just using what's in the comprehensive plan as a basis to risk things we had or deleted over time. Once a clear definition is accepted, then we can move forward on seeing if there resonates along a scenic road which you'd like to have designated as such.
I mean, the full listing, I could tell you what page is...
I've looked at it a million times.
Yeah. But it's also in this as well. Page 2 to 3 has the current scenic roads. There's...the town has, you know, six state designated scenic roads and nine locally designated roads. And then there's also a listing of historic roads as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
So what...how do we...what do we do now? How do we...I mean, obviously, the short-term recommendations are something that we should look at sooner rather than later, and nothing, to me, seems that costly on there at some mapping.
The short-term, yeah, would be less of a expenditure plan for sure, there's that.
How does the board move this forward? Is the committee going to work with us? Are you going to work with us? What's the recommendation?
I think at this point, we're just offering our conclusions to the board, and then, you know, we're certainly happy to help as consultants on some of those implementation items. But I don't know regarding the committee. I believe the term ended in December, and so at this point, our work is complete, at least in terms of that work.
Always stay on.
So in regards to the many of the recommendations for rural roads, I think some of those could be carried over to the conservation advisory board if nothing else to kind of help further in prioritization and maybe seeking proposals, force things such as mapping and so on to help the town board to move forward with specifics.
Yeah. I mean, speaking for myself, I don't know about the rest of you, but I'd be in favor of funding, even though we didn't budget for it this year, of funding it this year out of our power town fund balance because it doesn't look like a lot. And it looks like it could get a good start to what needs to be done. Would Hudson...would Sonya do that?
I mean, I think any consultant probably could do mapping, but, you know, it depends on which effort. And, you know, Cornell has done some mapping for the natural resources inventory, so you'd have to see who has it available. I mean, the data is pretty easy to get for our list, so we're all happy to help on that.
And we have the abridged recommendations enumerated?
Yes. The memos are the more abridged.
All right. So I guess we'll...
And to your point, I think that that would be a nice initial start to get the roads mapped just so that the various town boards and agencies would be able to have it highlighted as to which are those roads that should be given special attention, including the Henry.
Thank you. All right. So you guys like that?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks so much.
We'll have that forward starting in February.
So in terms of coordinating...
I can't hear you.
Sorry. In terms of coordinating with the village, I've read that there had been some coordination with the village on sustainability matters kind of prior to COVID and that...
With a joint environmental committee.
Is that something that needs help getting back on track?
Well, funny you should ask. We have a...we hired another environmental coordinator, Jamie McDonald from the Center for Environmental CEET. And Vanessa Bertozzi is on it. Josh Pulver is on it. I'm on it. Jamie McDonald isn't, and we're looking for new members. This is part of not only getting what we need to get done for our community smart bronze level certification, which just takes so much work, but it's also looking at other initiatives. And of course, anything we can do to formalize that, although Vanessa is sort of leads the charge on the environmental issues in the village, and we just try and sign on or help when we can. But if anyone wants to help us on that, that would be great. You know, and then Lydia's spearheading the comprehensive plan and helping us look at workforce housing and some of the planning issues that we're doing that affect the village. So, yeah, we always need help.
Do we?
Eleanor?
Is that posted or will that be posted on the website?
What?
The...
Right. I think it is. We put it out with this...it's always on our agenda.
But it'll be on the website so people can find it.
It is already on the website as part of the agenda. And we can put it on the front page also if...
That would be great. Or we could put it in our...in our cab section.
Just where people would find it, if they...
It's always here. If you don't find it on the website, you could just call...you can call Joanie, too. Website's kind of thick. Thank you.
All right. You too much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you. Really, it's...I know you sifted through a lot, and we need a lot of help, so thank you. We have another presentation for our community choice aggregate. I'm going to try it again, folks.
Hi. I'm Glenn Monherd from Joel Community Power, town's program administrator for community choice aggregation. I can...there should be a...just a one sheet in the agenda packet.
Yep, we have this.
I can...
Yeah. Just so everybody knows, we went through the community choice process what, a year ago, Glenn? I guess.
Yeah. It's not a deck per se, it's just a program update visual. Yeah, you know, the...we did go through the outreach and education this past year, 2022. It was probably one of, if not the most tumultuous years in the electricity market. Not that I go back that far, but certainly since I've been working in this field, it was driven largely by the Russian invasion in Ukraine. That sent the markets really into a period of tremendous volatility. And that was coupled then with inflation and other sort of domestic and kind of global economic factors, which made it incredibly both very high-priced. And you can see here, this is a little bit of a tough chart to look at because it's interrupted. If it's okay, do I...it's okay if I step away from the microphone for a second?
No, no, no.
So you can see here, the blue line is the Central Hudson rates. The green line is the CCA program fixed rate for renewable. The dietary line is the standard fixed rate. The town was not in this last contract with 10 municipalities here in the Hudson Valley. Hudson Valley were. That contract saved over $7 million.
I'm sorry. The green line is Hudson Valley?
That's right. The fixed...there's two fixed rates for the CCA, green being 100% renewable, gray being...
I thought it went up to 12%.
12 cents?
Oh, then it was a 12% overs...okay.
That's what 6 is over 5 is.
Yes. Right.
Right. The blue line is the variable monthly...
My mistake. I was thinking percentages.
Yeah. I'm worried. The strange thing about this is to try to even fit it on a chart. You see what happened to the Central Hudson rate a year ago, February of '22? Went up to 22 cents, which was...which is really extraordinary, right? And creates all sorts of trouble for people, folks paying their bills, of course. The CCA rate remains fixed here, you know, at about 6.5 cents. So folks save a lot of money on that contract. A lot of this, again, was driven by, you know, economic and geopolitical factors. It made it extraordinarily difficult to contract last year, so.
So that's why the program ran into trouble?
That's why the program ran into trouble in terms of its contract. And that's why we, you know, we really thought it best to wait with a number of communities. It wasn't just the town of Rhinebeck, but also the village of Sarverties, the town of Gardner, and others. Which is why the process to go through the outreach and education didn't end up going all the way through towards, towards a supply bid. It was just a, really just a wacky year in terms of market. The good news is that, well, the good news is, A, that fixed rate, the CCA fixed rate for the term of, as long as the contract did go, saved a lot of money. The second good news is that, that what we're seeing now is that markets are starting to settle. Not necessarily right now. So the Central Hudson rate right now is still over 14 cents. It's still extraordinarily high.
Thank you, Kathy.
What we are starting to see is that the markets are settling on a forward basis in the spring and summer of '23, going forward.
In the futures.
The futures. So that is why we're coming back now to recommend a sort of revised timeline, given the fact that the market has settled a bit. And we are recommending this regional, regionally, region-wide. You can see the, at the bottom of your screen there, the municipalities that have all agreed to go forward on this timeline, including the municipalities that were in that last contract, and then a group of new municipalities as well. So the town has taken the first step to sort of stay on this timeline, which was great at the end of last year, to post some basic website language. That's really the first step. That gets us, that kicks us off here in that first, in that first step, which is a 60-day period, a minimum of a 60-day period, typically lasts a little longer, but a minimum of a 60-day period, which is public outreach and education. We are targeting thereafter, we are targeting a supply bid issuance in the first week of March. That means that we would execute, should we receive a bid that meets the town's criteria, specifications, and is compliant, otherwise compliant with the RFP and meets our other requirements. We would look to contract at the end of March, early April. That would then kick off the opt-out period, which means that every eligible resident within the town would get a letter in the mail describing the program, as well as the rates and their options, their ability to.
And this is for town, not village?
That's correct, that's correct. And, and that would be in the spring. And then, right now, we are targeting a July 1 launch date, meaning that your electricity supplier would switch over from Central Hudson to the awarded supplier as of July 1. Now, I, I certainly appreciate that many folks are feeling very uneasy about their electricity bills at the moment because of Central Hudson billing issues. And there's actually an active investigation, I don't know if folks are aware of that, but there's an active investigation at the state level into the Central Hudson billing.
Debottled.
Debottled is a good word, which is now, I believe it initiated in August of, not of '22, but of '21, which is now, so something in the neighborhood of, call it 16, 17 months old, and still not completely resolved. So I understand that this is a, you know, people are feeling a little bit uneasy about this. One thing I'd say about that is this is actually an opportunity for the town to take back some control over, over your electricity bills and your electricity supply from Central Hudson, which, A, you know, over and above the billing issues, you can see the price instability that, that, that folks in the region have, have suffered through in the last year plus as a result. And Central Hudson, you know, Central Hudson, even amongst the New York utilities, is a very difficult utility in terms of prediction of, of where the price is going to go month to month.
I have just a couple of questions. Is the rate locked in with community choice right here?
Well, in this case, so the contracts are, so in this case, it was, it was, it was actually going to be a three-year contract. It, the contract lasted a bit over a year, for those of you who are not, who haven't heard this, excuse me. The supplier on this contract actually defaulted midway through the contract. In large part because of market factors. They also claim that Central Hudson, Central Hudson's billing failures had a lot to do with their inability to deliver on the contract. There's an ongoing lawsuit around that.
Just for our residents.
Sure.
How long can they expect to have the rate guaranteed if we opt in?
Yeah, so the typical contracts are 24 months. That's the most common contract length.
And people can opt out anytime or opt back in at any time?
That's correct. So this is an opt-out program, meaning that if the town chooses to go forward, the awarded supplier becomes the new default.
The new default of Central Hudson.
Right, replaces Central Hudson as the default supplier. Not as the, the new deliverer of, of energy, of electricity, nor the maintenance of the system, nor the repairs, nor the billing agent. That remains Central Hudson. So should power go out, you know, at your house, you still call Central Hudson. Should there be an issue with your bill, you still, you can call us as well, we can help you, but you'd still call Central Hudson. This only has to do with electricity supply, so where you're actually sourcing your power.
And this is the 100% green?
That's right. So that, there are typically two options, a 100% renewable and a quote-unquote standard mix, which tends to be less, less expensive. It is the town's choice which of those two is the default. So there will be a, one of those options will be the default. So should people not do anything at all, they would be automatically enrolled into the default. You always have the opportunity to opt out, either before the program starts or any time thereafter. And as the supervisor said, you can also always opt back in, so.
You just have to pay more attention. Basically, what we do is pick someone instead of Central Hudson that hopefully has a lower rate guaranteed for two years and hopefully is 100% renewable. And then you, as consumers, have to pay attention and opt in or opt out. It's asking people to, I guess, be responsible for something, proactive for something which you take for granted, your energy supply.
Yeah.
I think we could do it.
And we, and we, of course, provide, our job as the administrators to answer all your questions. We have a hotline that operates Monday through Friday. You can call it now. It's been going for three and a half years now, but if you're in the Hudson Valley. You can always call us to ask questions about your electricity bill, about the program, about rates. And it is your right to opt in and opt out. But, you know, the one thing I'll say about that, the one caveat there, is that I wouldn't recommend trying to game, you know, jumping in and out based on trying to guess.
It's like finding the market, it doesn't work.
And, and this market, you know, it's anybody's guess, you see? So, you know, there are some patterns over a course of four or six months, and then you'll see something that's just completely out of, and this is a little bit atypical, but not entirely atypical for what electricity.
All right, let me just, is this something you guys want to continue with?
Yeah.
Alan?
Yes.
Okay, so what's our next step?
So the next step, so we're already, as I said, we're already here, we're already in the 60 days. So what we're going to do is we're going to schedule if, if Jeff Demasky hasn't already been in touch, he will be in touch about scheduling.
Forums.
Exactly, information sessions, a number of other outreach activities here. Website posts, social media posts, advertisements, signage, physical signage. We'd like to integrate into any sort of town-wide distributions or newsletters or supervisor notes, memos, or anything else that you send, you tend to send out. We'd like to, you know, supply some information for that. Just, the idea here is, is just an all-of-the-above outreach strategy. We try every method to reach as many different groups, parent groups, senior citizen groups, religious group, you know, every type of, of community group that we can. We offer to do all sorts of different presentations and Jeff, you know, tends to do these sort of office hours, you know, if you want him to sort of camp out in town hall for an hour a week, he'll do that, you know, that sort of thing. We just try to reach as many people as we possibly can.
We have two new active newspapers here and our old standby, Daily Friedman. So I think we're in, you know, we, the last go-round disappointed not only us, but a lot of people, but we saw the volatility, what it meant to our residents to have another power source. And I just want to remind village residents, you would not have access to this unless the village opted, so. I think we're good, Glenn.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you, thanks for having me.
First question.
Oh, yeah, please.
The answer may be obvious, but why do you recommend against trying to game the system?
Well, only because the electricity rate, utility electricity rates are extraordinarily difficult to predict. I watch them every day. I wouldn't bet a dollar on what's going to happen next month, you know? And the reason for that is complicated, and I won't wait, I won't take too much time, but the, the, the basic reason is that Central Hudson, and this is all utilities in New York, but Central Hudson's buying, the way that they are buying, is not simply market, following the market precisely. There's a lot of hedging and other things that are not transparent to us, not transparent to anybody, right? And, and, and consumers can't see it, the state, there is no, there is no public disclosure of how Central Hudson is buying it, what price, from whom, for what volume, right? So therefore, from month to month, there are all sorts of contracts and transactions that are underlying your price that you can't see. And you can't know about until after. The only way you know what price you have is it shows up on your bill. So, so we know, we're watching the market. Oh, man, surely utility rates must be going up. And then sometimes the opposite will happen, right? Utility rates will actually go down. Then sometimes the next month, you'll see a 22-cent rate or a 14-cent rate. You know, these types of things, they happen all the time, and they're extraordinarily unpredictable. So that's why I would say, I, I, you can jump in and jump out of the program, that's a feature of the program, without any penalty whatsoever, but I wouldn't try to, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend personally trying to say, oh, look, it looks like the utility's on a down wave, maybe I'll try to catch that, and then maybe I'll jump back to the program when the, you know, it's just extraordinarily difficult to do.
Well, as I try to picture it, I assume the problem or a problem is that there are notice periods and so forth, and you can't get in and out every 24 hours.
You can't get in, you can't get in every 24 hours. You can get in every month, though, if you do it, if you time it right. If you really were doing that, again, it's a, very few people do it, and it is a, it's, it's, you know, it's worse than the stock market for sure, but, you know, you can get in if you time it right. You can jump back and forth every month if you go to mom.
But once you're in, I take it from part of what you said, once you're in, you're in for a month?
A month, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that, yeah, the month billing cycle is just sort of the standard unit of, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Okay. We have Rudy McIntyre here to talk to us about banning gas-powered leaf blowers in the Hamlet of Rhine Cliff.
You want me to talk about?
Yeah.
Okay.
How are you? Thanks, Glenn, thanks, thanks, Ruben.
Well, do you want to hear my complaints, or what would you like to hear?
We put you on the agenda, we did.
Okay, well, I, for those who don't know, I have a neighbor who's.
Would you introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name's Rudy McIntyre, I live in Rhine Cliff. I have a neighbor who loves his three floor more than pretty much anything else. Sometimes he'll go off for seven and a half hours, I've clocked him. For the month of November alone, he went off for 19 hours. And then that's a conservative estimate. Could probably find more if I looked at my cameras, but the man loves his leaf floor, and it is a very, very loud leaf blower. It's not the four-stroke engine, it's non-electric. It's an old backpack, very, very loud one, that the neighborhood is frankly very sick of. I've been on this issue for more than two years, and it's only gotten worse in that time. I guess we can short this conversation a little bit. We have, Ed and Alan and I have come up with a, an ordinance that was approved by Jim Nellie, and we submitted it to Warren, and I have not heard back from him yet. I don't know if either of you have either. So that's where that's at.
What is the, what, what, what is the subject, the overview of the law that you're proposing?
The overview is that the current ordinance is, says that, it says 70 decibels at 10 feet. And whoever wrote that didn't know what they're doing. Clearly didn't understand sound or acoustics at all. If that were enforced, everything is illegal. Every gas-powered piece of equipment you connect, even electric and battery-powered, would be illegal. It's just a very, very poorly worded ordinance. Michael Trimble has spoke with this guy numerous times, sent him letters numerous times. The police have showed up three times, twice of which I have called and upon him. And nothing can change. Nothing has changed, I should say. The police basically say the ordinance is not enforceable. Michael Trimble is saying it's not enforceable. So we have come up with a new ordinance that is really a copy and paste from other cities' noise ordinance.
And it says?
It says 65 decibels at 50 feet. Now, what this would do is the quieter leaf blowers would be fine.
50 feet from what, the source or the?
From the source, or, or, or the, or the property line, whichever is less. So if you're, if you're operating it on your property line, five feet away, chances are it's going to violate that ordinance. But if you're 50 feet away and you've got one of the quieter gas-powered leaf blowers, then it would pass, so.
So you're asking us to enact this, not ban gas-powered leaf blowers from Rhine Cliff?
I'm after anything that will shut this guy down. Anything whatsoever that can stop this guy from going off for seven and a half hours, anything. If it's a ban, great. I know a lot of residents of Rhine Cliff are in favor of a ban. I, personally, I'm not, but it seems like nothing else is, is working here. So if a ban is what's going to take care of this problem, yes, I'm in favor of it. But I think, I think this man should just have some reasonable use of his leaf blower and not subject the whole neighborhood to hours and hours of this.
Do we need to also stipulate hours or are you just asking for this reduction in decibels?
The, it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt to have an hours, you know, adjustment in that. But I think the stipulation of 65 decibels at 50 feet would take care of it.
For the property line.
Now, you guys have this? Can you get Warren to sign off on it and get it on our next agenda?
I've emailed Warren three times with no response.
Warren only works for us, he can't respond to non-town workers.
I, I asked him to review it, I haven't heard back.
I asked him too.
My question is, given the lot sizes in Rhine Cliff, it's, it's pretty hard to get 50 feet away from most lot line. And so, and 65 dB at 50 feet, at 25 feet, it's another, it's up in the, up in the 60s. I'm sorry, 65 dB is, anyway. You're going to, you're going to get much louder if you're half that distance, with low to 60 dB.
Right, I, I think there's, there's pros and cons on a ban and setting up some kind of a decibel limit. A ban would say, no, you can't use them anymore. Other cities have done that, a lot of cities have.
So I guess if we would contemplate a ban, I'd want to see a well-written petition signed off by.
How many people would need to sign that petition in Rhine Cliff for you to, to take that?
A majority, a, a majority.
We would still have to pass a local law.
We'd still have to pass a local law, and it would have to be a well-written petition, then, you know.
Okay.
A petition, again, is some real complexities, like what about the professional landscapers? Well, they, they could use rates.
Let's do this, let's get, please, I'll call. Let's do this, let's get, please, I'll call Warren tomorrow, and you con, let's get this decibel adjustment on for the next meeting. I won't be here for the next meeting, you can do it without...
Yeah, I mean, one of the problems is that if the homeowner measures the decibel level, and then the cops come, or whoever, the enforcement officer comes, and the leaf blower is shut down, which is what's been asked, right?
You can't get a ticket.
Then you can't get a ticket. It seems to me that whatever process, there needs to be a process change so that a homeowner can give us a complaint with whatever evidence you have, either a video, or video of your DB meter.
I don't think the police, the police don't accept that.
The last time I called the police out, the policeman showed up, and the homeowner shut off his leaf blower and sat it next to him, and I asked the policeman to take the decibel meter reading of that, so it could be submitted to the ZEO, and the police officer looked at me and said, "I don't hear a leaf blower." The obvious answer is he just shut it up because he saw the policeman.
Yeah.
And so the police are not motivated to take care of this problem.
Yeah, but that's not what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting that, say, a video with a DB meter and a leaf blower and a picture...
I think we need to talk to the police. I don't think they accept that.
I think if we change the law, we could, they could just come and, that's one of the things I want to talk to Warren about, is there another pathway?
I'd be happy to take a video of another phone and the...
Yeah, yeah, but that's why I...
Sure, no problem.
Can you guys get this done, and then we'll see what happens, and if need be, we can move to something more strict in the name of...
Yeah, what I was looking for is a way for the homeowner to make a complaint that would stick, rather than have people, you know, a cop come, and there's no, there's no noise.
Right.
It's crazy. If that's not possible, then the next question is, we could look at a ban.
And on the topic of a ban, again, how many signatures would I have to have for a well-written petition for you to take up that?
I think we'd need attorney advice, or...
What do you think? How many, how many homeowners are there?
Well, we'd have to get the Lisbonian assessors, because they're all on a lighting and water district, and we'd have to go, more than 50%.
Okay. I think I could...
It's not a huge number.
No. It's a problem that other people over the years have called into the zoning office, and nothing has happened.
Yeah, it's a problem...
And so nobody believes anything can be done.
It's a problem in Rhine Cliff, it's a hamlet, I get it. I also get that other municipalities are banning gas-powered leaf blowers. I just feel because of the rural nature of our town, and a lot of people do use them for their work, that it's leading to overstep of local government, doesn't mean I don't support not using gas. I get it.
Right, there are other cities as well who have implemented a seasonal ban, and I have mentioned this before in email, but I think a seasonal ban where they are allowed certain parts of the year, such as two weeks before the leaf pickup, in both the spring and the fall, you have a period where they're not banned. It's just like the fire ban. Sometimes it's, it's allowed, sometimes it's not, but a policeman doesn't need to come and measure your fire, and, you know, look at the height, or one way or another evaluate it. It's a fire, it's illegal during certain times of the year. I think that same concept could apply to leaf blowers, and they still get to use it to clean up their lawn, but the other, you know, 12, 11 months out of the year, they're illegal.
So, but you're not asking for that now, you're asking for this lower decibel?
That's my first crack at trying to solve this problem.
My only concern with that is how do you enforce it?
And do you want to look at adding a...
I'm going to talk to Warren, we'll figure something out.
You need the seasonal ban?
No, I...
Hourly, hours, operational this hour to that hour only?
Yeah, I'll talk to Warren.
Enforce on the side, I want to see if I can, I want to make sure I understand the proposal that Warren is reviewing. I take it is that if one has a leaf blower that, at a distance of 50 feet, does not exceed 60 decibels, then the blower would be legal no matter where used on the owner's property?
If the 50 feet or, or the distance between the property line, whichever is less. So if you're five feet from your property line, and it measures 65 decibels at five feet, no, you can't do that. But if you back up 50 feet, it will measure less than that, and you're fined.
Okay.
But I guess this is where sound gets a little confusing, is that nobody's going to be complaining over something about 65 decibels at 50 feet. Nobody. It's not that loud.
Yeah, but, yeah, but given the average lot sizes in the Hamlet, it's hard to get 65 feet from the property line.
It is, but putting up with a very loud leaf blower for seven and a half hours to many, many people, that's even worse.
You'll get something on for the next meeting?
Yeah.
I won't be here for the next meeting.
Oh, good.
Thanks, Rudy.
Okay.
Thank you, and I'm sorry I just take it so long.
We'll get it on.
Yeah.
All right, good night. I'd like a motion for 2023, year 33, for standard workday for parents to retirement. I have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. I'd like the motion for 2023, O34, hiring a temporary clerical support for the cemetery office.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Ed, may I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chant, any discussion?
It's just for her to complete her work.
To finish the, yeah.
Finish what she said.
This is the making law, the deals online. Good, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Moves unanimously, thank you. I need a resolution for 2023, O35, cemetery tree care, tab 33.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ed.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes the motion. I'd like a motion for 2023, O36, the Hudsonia letter of engagement for the White School House road study.
Motion.
Thank you, Chant, you may have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Alan. This is to engage Hudsonia to do an environmental study of White School House road. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Moves unanimously. I will make a motion for 2023, O37, for preliminary accounts payable abstracts, tab 39. May I have, it's basically 39 checks totaling $62,685.11. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Is there any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It passes unanimously. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2023, O38, for preliminary accounts payable abstracts, tab 40. It is for 20 checks totaling $50,871.22.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Moves unanimously. I will make a motion for 2023, O39, for our capital abstracts, for our checks totaling $5,290.42. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ed. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Moves unanimously. And lastly, I will make a motion for 2023, O40, for budget transfers and amendments, tab 42. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. We have two pieces of business from the floor, new business.
Yes.
Go ahead, Ed.
We have partner maintenance to be reinstated as a certain base that the president would be for us. It's Mike Prinsa and Tom Coker.
Resolution 2023, O41, hiring of temporary part-time maintenance department labor. Ed, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We have another resolution for appointing engagement for a consultant for review of Red Wing draft environmental impact statement. Resolution 2023, 42, 042. Does anyone want to bring it forward?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there any questions, or...
Hey, what's about, I mean, what is the nature of the consultation?
I don't know, and we have Eric Kivia and Jim Levy on it.
Well, I'd suggest we have a, no more than, she wrote this in the...
Okay.
Is that all right?
It's fine. Thank you. Table. Is there any questions or comments on any non-agenda or agenda items from the public? Hearing nothing, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Thank you, good night, everyone, and I won't be here at our agenda meeting, I think so.
That's all we are.